Well, Mike called Tara and said he was maybe a little late.
Oh, okay.
So should we start without him or?
Oh, this time already.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Slow day. Travel slow, uh, walk slow.
Yeah. All right, so good to be here.
Good to be here. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and is just as strong. I'll make a motion to approve the movement agenda presented.
I'll second it. Motion to... There being a segment of the agenda, approving the agenda, all of you say aye.
Aye.
Nine AM Lawrence Winston Heritage Park to discuss with possible action funding for the new military museum.
Okay. Here is, uh... A little background on the... On the project. We started... We started about a year ago talking about this. And goes back to Operation LZ. Back when, when we had that, we had nineteen schools and over eighteen hundred school kids come. And two of those exhibits and stuff that were out there. And they don't teach an awful lot about war anymore in... Or veterans or whatever in the school. So we began thinking about maybe having a, a veterans kind of museum at Heritage Park. And when we started, when we started it... I don't know if you guys are familiar with Heritage Park. There's the park area. When we, when we started talking about this, we're gonna take this, this building that's back here on the, down on the end. That is that barracks building they moved from Algonah that they had used to keep those German prisoners that were in Algonah after the war. They moved this over. And we thought, well, that'd make a nice one. Well, then we started looking at that building and when they moved it in there, it's just sitting on posts. And when we looked under it, you'd see all the floor joists, so there's absolutely no insulation in it at all. And then, so, and we started looking what it would cost to do that. And when the numbers, when you start running the numbers, we came up with probably half of what it would cost to build a new building just to get that one. It needed a new roof and insulation and electrical. And it had no heating or air conditioning, so if you're gonna have a museum display, you'd have to have climate control. So it got to the point where you're gonna spend more than half of what it would take to build a new building to fix that little thing. Well, then as this has, as this has evolved, uh... A number of other people have appeared, appeared on the scene. There's a John Hoysier. He's from down in O'Fallon, Missouri. And during Operation LZ, he had a Vietnam display inside the, uh, Winnebago RV building. That big one, remember that display? Fabulous display. Well, John's a little older. He's retired military and he's about retired, and his partner is also retired military. John's seventy-four, his partner's seventy-six. And that display, I don't know if you saw that, these two big trailers that they load this in and out of. And he got, he said, we've gotten to the point where, my, my...
Excuse me.
Oh, wait a minute.
Morning. Discussing the military museum at Heritage Park.
Anyway, they've gotten to the point where they can't do that anymore. And he was so impressed with Operation LZ. He came to Riley Lewis and said, "You know, I'd be interested in giving you my collection when we decide that we can't do this anymore." Well, he's getting very close to that point. That's a huge collection. Well, then we were looking at this little building back here thinking, you couldn't even get that in that building, no matter what you did, even if you've got it. So, uh... So then we started looking at a, building a new building. And we, we look, we've looked at two sites. We, we looked at tearing that building down or moving it somewhere. And putting a building in there. And that, that pole building behind it is just used for storage. It, it's just got gravel floor in it. We thought, maybe we could put another building in there and connect it to that one and that. Well, that's quite a bit of screwing around too when you start looking at the money. So currently, we're looking at this site down here in the, in the southeast corner. Now that falls off there to, down to the road. There's, but that's a bad thing and a good thing, because now we're, now I think what we're gonna do is... That's why I'm looking for more money. Gonna put a, gonna make it two stories. Gonna put a basement in there, so, and take the fence down and make it so... We wanna have this open maybe three days a week, even when the park isn't open. So, uh, put some parking. They can just pull up and go in the basement of the thing, or they can walk around the front, but, so we'll have two stories. We'll have a basement and we'll have it up. And that'll give us place where we can have, uh, a kind, a, a big meeting room. And before, when we started out, we're just gonna have the small restrooms and put larger restrooms in. You know, make it a really, a really nice facility. So as we move, as we move into that, started working with Norma Hertzner over at, at, uh, North City. And she's in, currently in the process of making the application to the state of Iowa for that Iowa Great Places Destination Grant. And that one, that one could be, uh, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars if we can get that. Then we could do some other stuff with the park in addition to, to that. But that application is in the process right now. And, uh, that would, that would be a nice catch if we can do that. And they, they, they try, you know, they do an awful lot of stuff in the southern part of the state or in big population areas. So Norma, from talking with the people down there, it seems to think we might have a pretty good chance with a, with a thing like this outstate, because they're looking for outstate stuff to do that with. So that, well, we won't know about that for a few months probably. But we also right now have an anonymous donor who will match dollar for dollar whatever we were raised through the end of February. Which would, uh, and as you can see right now, we're, uh... And there's slightly more money than raised than what shows on what you have. We, we picked up another twenty-five-hundred dollar grant from the Kenny Lindstrom Foundation. And we got another, uh, another four thousand dollars from the Hanson Foundation. So, you know, right now, we're at about seventy thousand dollars. Couple other things for stuff going in there. Uh, when Riley, Christmas Riley Lewis had his whole family down in Des Moines on a weekend. And they rented a big limo and drove over, looked at all the Christmas lights and whatever. And then on Saturday, he went out to Camp Dodge to the Gold Star Military Museum. I don't know if you've ever been there. They have a, they got, I mean, they got tanks and trucks and anti-aircraft, I mean...
Was that at?
At Camp Dodge in Des Moines. Um, but the, the, the guy that's the commander of that Camp Dodge facility took him through all of that. And, uh, you know, after they were done, the guy said, "Well, if you, you get this thing going," he said, "Come out here once," and he said, "Do you see those two buildings back there?" There's two, Riley said, "There are two probably fifty by two hundred or sixty by two hundred." He said, "Those are full of stuff that we have that we can't use." So when, when you get this, you come down here, whatever you can find in there, you can have. You haul it, you got it. So we've had, and there's another fellow over at Little Cedar that has a, he was at, uh, Operation LZ also. Uh, has a lot of trucks and a lot of military equipment that, in the collection. And he's fairly elderly guy also. So we have, we have a lot of resources that are available to us to, uh, fill this thing. But, uh... I mean, I just, I, we would love, we would love to have you guys help us financially if you have, you know, money's available. But I did this more just to bring you up to date on, you know, what we got going on out there. Um, we're, we're still... We fight this battle in our, in our group, uh, of who to get to do the work. You know, we had some that said, "Well, we should keep it in town." But when you start with that corner down there, and you start pouring concrete and moving dirt and... I mean, I, we've had several other people come to us that I think are probably a lot more capable of completing that project than... So I don't know exactly who we're gonna end up with on the construction of the building. And we haven't, we haven't even selected a building yet. We have, there's a picture in there of, you know, what we're, conceptually what we'd like it to look like, but we still haven't, uh... I talked to Robert Schwartz. He's dealing with that company down in Fremont, Nebraska, and that's a pole and beam. They put, the insides, great looking inside, you know, and it, it would kind of match the park look. But that, again, you've moved out of, out of the local market, so I'm not quite sure where that will all end up.
Would this be a public building or a, uh, Heritage Park private?
No, it's gotta be public building. That's, that's why we wanna put it down in that corner so that it can, it can be open even if the park, because...
I know it'll be open to the public, but like for bidding or offer specs and all that, is it, are we gonna have to go by public building specs or by, do we go by private?
I think we can go...
Huge difference.
Yeah, I understand that. And it, and, and because it falls under the historical society, I think we can go private.
Okay.
I believe. Because it's a five oh one, three C.
He's got, I don't know if you're aware, he's got two retired military guys that have a, have a lot of collectibles.
Were you at Operation LZ?
No.
Oh, well, that building that, I'll tell you, that building that Winnebago built, that they were gonna make a RV museum that's... If you come in the back gate, it's that first big building on the right-hand side there, which is never, Greg Bowman's supposed to be handling that. I'm guessing that'll never happen. But anyway, this guy came, he came to Operation LZ and he had, uh, he's from down in O'Fallon, Missouri. And they have two retired military guys, and they're both in their late seventies. And he has this huge Vietnam War collection that's just amazing. But he contacted Riley Lewis and said, "You know, I was really impressed with your Operation LZ and, you know, we're good, we can't do this anymore." You know, "We can't schlep this stuff all over the country and set it up and haul it." And I'd like to give it to you guys to put in your museum if you're gonna do that. So that's, that's when we moved from the little building to building to building, you know, so...
I'm guessing you'll probably, having the two level, you'll probably have to have some kind of handicap, right?
Yes, well, and, and depending on if, if, uh, you know, if we come through with this state grant, uh, you can think about putting an elevator in it. So that they wouldn't, because there, there's a fair grade there from where that road is to the level of the park. It's perfect for sitting, sitting the building in and having a basement out the back. But to park out in front and get around and get up into that presents some challenges. But if we were to get this grant, we could, you know, we could put an elevator, a small elevator. We have that in our wish list. We have a lot of things on the wish list, of course, but that's all I had. Any questions?
Does it help on your, uh, Great Places Grant to have, uh, local grants from the government?
It helps, it, all, what they want, what Norma tells me is that what they wanna see is local participation. Is, I think the words that are in the, I mean, they, they don't wanna think that they're gonna bring all the money and do the thing and the people that are gonna benefit from it aren't participating in the, in the project. I think it is, they look for local participation is the wording. So, and I've, uh, I talked to the folks down in Hancock County yesterday and Worth County next week. So we're, we're reaching out to the whole area here. Uh, and the city, uh, you know, Barney's Honor Committee. So the city's gonna participate at some level too, so... But we're just trying to get as much as we can before whoever this person is pulls the trigger on that one-for-one match, 'cause that'll give us a nice jump.
What, Hancock said that they would, they were purchasing space?
They're, yes, they're, but they're, I'm also on the compensation board down there. And I see they... We were trying to catch them up a little bit. They were behind comparable counties, or so I, so we, we, we set four and a half percent. And I see they turned, the commissioners turned theirs down. But they let the other ones, the other officers and whatever stand, but... But yes, they're, they're doing their budgets this week also.
So they're looking at doing a next year's budget starting to...
Yes, yes.
So the donations that would come in before, before your deadline, is that cludges or?
That's every, whatever we have, not whatever we have raised.
Okay. Uh... If we haven't actually physically given you the money, if we, the promise of giving the money isn't enough?
I think that will work. I, with that, I, I'd like to tell you, I know whoever, who this is, but I don't. And I, and I, my first thought would be the Hanson's, but they've given us an awful lot already, so I think it must be somebody...
They usually do it out...
Through the, well, through the foundation, you know? So, uh, so I don't know who it is. But I would, I would, I would think yes. I mean, somebody that's gonna give that kind of money, I don't think they're gonna quibble over whether you got it in hand or whether it's coming from a branch of government. I think that would still, yes. Yep.
Well, it looks like a fantastic project.
Oh, it's gonna, I, I mean, it's just something, something new every day pops up. I can't, I, I get phone calls at home from people, "I've got this and this and this and this," you know, where to... So now we're just gonna start setting up days out at the park where, and they're gonna put it in the paper, where people have things that they want that, they can bring it, donate it on a fixed day, because poor Dawn gets, I mean, her phone rings off the wall. People say, "Well, can I drop this off with you?" "No, you can't." So we're gonna try and set up days when people can, if they have stuff, they can bring in. 'Cause we, we, we don't want just piles of stuff. We want the story, I mean, part of, part of the expense of this is we're gonna try and make this appealing to the kids. So we're gonna have a lot of audio visual and a lot of, you know, we're gonna have Bluetooth hookup so they can listen to it on their phones or, you know, whatever, you know?
One thing, I've been talking to Dawn, my dad has like between five and seven hundred pictures from Korea.
Oh, wow!
All in color. He was at two of the, uh, East Ops. And he's got all the generals from the different countries and, and...
Well, you know, as you, boy, that'd be great, 'cause if you move back...
Add it on a flash drive.
Yeah.
So it'd be simple for you to easily extract whatever you want and have it, you know, showing it has the tag on the bottom who's in it.
We've had a really good response too from the, uh, DVA and the VFWs and around. I mean, when we start working out there, you know, uh, Larry Paul, who's the, the president of the DVA, he said, "Shh," he said, "You let us know." I, he said, "I can have fifty guys here anytime you need labor." Just, I just put out the word, you'll have fifty guys, no problem. So, and it's been sort of the same at the, you know, VFW in Clear Lake. So I think, you know, once I get started, there's gonna be a lot of work to be done, but I think we'll have good response from the veterans organizations on that.
And it'd be nice if you could make the facility sustainable too, to where it's cheap to eat.
Yep. Well, we, you know, and we, we talked about that and I, we have some unknowns out there in that park with, right? Right. Here somewhere, there's a manhole. Don't know what it is. Norma was gonna look. She said she's got all those city and county things that show, but there's a manhole there that nobody knows what it is.
Have they looked down in it?
No, there, no, they haven't, so that, but the utilities and some of those kind of things, you know? Gotta get electrical over there. There's, the gas isn't over there, the gas is over here. And over here, we gotta get gas. But the gas company has said, "They'll, they'll put that in as a donation." So I think we're in a pretty good shit there. All right?
Well, you wanna talk about this as a budget moment? Get to the budget later, or... We're gonna discuss it later in the meeting.
That's fine. Thank you. Appreciate your time. I was the historian. Have a great day.
Thanks, guys. All right. The three, consider for approval, law enforcement contract with Buffalo Center.
You guys have a copy of the contract that Kelsey?
I only got one copy.
She just drew it up. It's similar to the other ones. And it does... This is a year-long contract here. I wasn't at the meeting. You and Dave were in this...
Put you in mind of the other cities then? As far as the way the other cities are...
Yeah.
This one is running from January one to December. The end of December, the other ones run fiscal year. So we're gonna be six months off. We'll have to...
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
You should just have a six-month contract.
Right, right.
But it wouldn't be that hard to establish this.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
As long as we do it ahead of time.
Yep, right.
It would've been nice to sign a longer one.
Right.
Games overall.
Yep. So, and that, I think reflects, I think there was a dispute of the population or something. It, it's a little cheaper than their last contract, I believe. So...
Somebody had nine hundred and fifty, and then there's another one that says nine hundred and five.
Nine hundred and five.
That's the estimate or the actual from ten years ago?
Right.
Yeah, I think the actual from ten years ago was probably nine fifty something.
Yeah, right.
I looked it up and I, I've seen nine hundred and five. I don't really get it, but...
Yep. So, yeah, we haven't had John or anybody sign it yet, but, uh, that's the contract there. So I guess we're just bringing it in front of you guys to approve it.
They're gonna do it for a year. They are still entertaining other avenues, but I, I think it's looking fairly favorable towards, uh... I think what's the cheapest for the city and good for the county goal, to do it this way. Uh, if, if they, if they go to with their own police department in a sense, in order to provide twenty-four-hour coverage, they would have to have at least two officers. 'Cause if you do the percentage of our population, Port City or Lake Mills, it comes out to two. Uh, and, and they've got, you know, one city limit and five officers over there. And I think there's nine here, is there? And, uh, you know, to do one city limit. So it's a lot easier for, you know, Buffalo Center's been, you know, getting by pretty well because, uh, well, Pat used to be, be there all the time.
Right, yeah, he had.
Uh, but, you know, the younger guy, and then he was, uh, not doing it, he was gone. So then the sheriff's department had to, uh, make up the ground, which we, you know, Buffalo Center was, they, they've gotten by good for years. So it doesn't matter what size town you have, it's a minimum cost to do a business. You're gonna have to have a certain number of staff to cover so many hours.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, to be fair, it's, it's, you know, our tax dollars go into the sheriff's budget. But also Lake Mills and Port Cities' tax dollars go into the sheriff's budget and they provide their own twenty-four hour. So they would have to, at a minimum, have to have a, an officer and a half.
Right.
Part-time guy or whatever. And even then, it probably would work out.
So, yeah, hopefully in a year, we can negotiate a longer contract so we can add additional staff. With this contract, there is no guaranteed hours for them, since they won't commit to longer than a year, 'cause we can't hire somebody.
So how are we gonna staff this?
Well, there's no guarantee of hours. So, I mean, we're currently, yeah, we're currently, I mean, it would be nice to add somebody to help out, but they're gonna have to do something in a year regardless, even if they hire somebody.
And they could do something before then.
Right.
This is working out this summer, they could...
Yep.
Sign a longer contract and...
Right.
And then maybe we could hire...
Yep.
Yeah, and you, you guys gotta replace one now, 'cause you had one lady.
Yep.
And if Buffalo were signing the four-year contract, then they probably would be able to hire another that'd be the size. So it'd be, they would have...
Yeah, we would have. I mean, we could use one now, we're shorthanded right now. So, I mean, it would definitely help out, so...
But, uh, well, I have no problem with this kind of... I don't either. I, I, you know, Buffalo wants to have their own place to live. I, I, you know, Buffalo wants to have their own place to live. I don't have a problem with that either.
Well, I need two seconds.
Well, that one's front and back.
I'll make a motion to approve the law enforcement contract with Buffalo Center at the end of the year.
Second it. Alright, on a motion, very, the circumstances to approve the law enforcement contract with Buffalo Center, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Decide this one too, or?
Yes, please.
Just send it right to me.
Go ahead, go ahead, keep going. It's, it's, it's me.
Do you have a ready shot mic?
This is Becky.
Is Scott available?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Send him on.
Thank you.
Be back.
He's upstairs. I'll have him stop by here, obviously. Thanks, guys.
Alright, good day. You tried to call me the other day. I apologize. It was, it's been a hectic news week. And it's about to get even more hectic. I'm just waiting. Yeah, please.
So is it just a paper, Sheriff's Quarterly Report, or is it, is, uh, Sheriff's Quarterly Reports? Is that something they just look at?
Yeah.
Consider for approval Sheriff's Quarterly Report. Second. No, no, I, I should've said, I should've said it. I'll make it a little. Mr. Senator, second, very, approve the Sheriff's Quarterly Report, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Let's see. Page number eleven, quick two. Consider for approval liquor license for the Super Bowl at Forest City. My second, a motion, Senator, second, very, very, to approve the liquor license for the Super Bowl at Forest City, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Consider for approval, auditor's chance for this. Morning, Scott.
Morning.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's chances. Second, motion, very, and second, Senator, approve the auditor's chances, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Scott?
Morning. Um, I guess we'll have some budget things to discuss later on, but otherwise I don't have anything to discuss.
I have a few. I guess I didn't have anything this week.
No news is good news, I guess.
Anybody else got anything for secondary roads? Move on to auditor's office. We'll discuss drainage matters.
Chris isn't here.
Anything for drainage?
Nope, nothing at all.
Alright, then number six, discussion with possible action regarding letter received from the Iowa River Watershed Coalition. You guys all get a chance to read that?
Yeah, we were supposed to RSVP like yesterday.
What's our thoughts there? I guess how detailed they want us to, how involved they want us to get. It's kinda ambiguous to me as to the level of what it would cost, what it would do, the participation.
We got offered being like another one of these drainage coalitions a long time ago. Well, maybe you were here, Mike, but we didn't do it then either because of the, cause you just don't know what it's gonna get us involved in.
And who's gonna be doing the talk and, and, and what kind of input we're gonna have. You know, this meeting tomorrow, is it tomorrow or whenever it is that's coming up, that's where the input is. But I get the feeling it'd be a small voice compared to what they're trying to do.
It's like to me, there may be an agenda on the details.
Yeah. As much as I want, but clean water, I get the feeling it would come back to bite us in the future. Look forward.
I, I guess I...
It'd be nice to know the information that comes out of that meeting or like you said, the RSVP was due yesterday to go to the meeting.
Can't remember if festival meetings, uh, to look up. It's like all day meeting, but it's not coming through. Yeah, it's a six-hour affair.
And it's quite a ways down too.
Yeah.
Was it down by Tama or was it?
I think so. I gave all the information to Chris and she's sick, so I don't know.
Yeah. Trying to remember. Was it, was it an email or was it a letter?
It was a letter, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I got it in here. Did you guys? I can find things easier on the computer. I got some broken form though. I can find, did you guys? I can find things easier on the computer. I got some broken form though.
I thought it came to my email, but I guess.
Yeah.
It came last Tuesday or something.
So Chris sent a letter to John Torbert. I'll just make a copy of his reply for you guys. This is the letter. I hate to have you touch it, but just kidding.
I'll just lay it down.
Just kidding.
You don't want the crud. I don't wanna give the crud.
Yeah.
Yours.
Where's it gonna be?
Toledo is his next to Toledo.
Yeah.
Nine to three. Friday.
Do you want puppies of this too, or you?
No, probably wouldn't hurt. I can't find it. So we are in the Iowa River watershed, right?
No, it isn't for sure.
Well, I think that the cedar dumps into the Iowa, doesn't it? Oh, the Iowa is south of town. Starts, Crystal Lake goes to just south of town. I don't know. I think most of it goes to the river. This, this part in the south end of Forest City probably goes that direction. But no, it goes over the river from there.
Well, see, and that was the other, when we were invited into that other one a long time ago, we only had like a tiny bit of property that went into it, so it, we were scared we were gonna end up paying more bills than what our benefit was worth.
It just goes through a small part of Green Township. What's your every grocery way rate?
Uh, Cedar.
Rick's here. You want me to ask him if he knows anything about it?
Yeah, that'd be great. According to John Torbert, they've been popping up, so maybe this is...
I remember, I'm trying to remember the path. It's, uh,
The reason for this is solely...
I used to do the sewer in Thompson's. I had to map it out where my sewer goes.
Maybe you got your purposes.
Was it D one over to the river?
I don't see that.
No, Shell Rock's in the season. I knew there was two more.
Right.
The Cedars, that was. Old. Iowa River, right? The headwaters are from
Crystal Lake.
And it goes over towards Garner and head south through Franklin County and, and on to Tama to Lido area. Really. Unless there's some water down by Crystal Lake that dump into Crystal Lake. I don't think any of it here does.
Only here, and most of ours. I think over that, which probably is up.
Everything goes into Buffalo Creek, doesn't it?
Ranger Buffalo Creek.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to offend anybody.
White water ground. Bringing up some... Watershed map of Iowa.
These pictures should match. Rick didn't have a, he hasn't told me much about it except what was on the radio. He didn't have a real, one fuzzy.
We, uh, I didn't, yeah, that's not real accurate.
Isn't it?
Because it doesn't show us anything. Shows us everything. We do have part of it goes to Des Moines River.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
DD three dash eleven that goes to the Des Moines River.
Yeah.
I said it, Des Moines River, we don't see, so most, you know, a lot of the western part. There's just a little bit in the northern, the part that goes up to Minnesota, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, I've been doing that all the time.
Well, according to this, this map, this where the Iowa watershed.
The Iowa watershed.
I don't just get a cold like right now.
Do you guys requisition surgical masks, just out of curiosity?
Been thinking about it.
That's basically what I saw.
I would go with charcoal filtered mask.
I'm gonna get one of those like full face with a hose, like.
It'd be one of those breathers like for the fallen hangers.
Still with dark later.
We're in the Shell Rock.
Yeah, which dumps into Cedar.
And a little bit of the upper Cedar and Winnebago, Shell Rock, and Upper Cedar is what we're in. Nothing in the Des Moines.
Well, there should be.
Should be a little bit.
The corner to west end goes to Des Moines.
Could you reach John's?
I don't think this one is worth it for us to participate on since we're not in the district.
I, I didn't, uh...
That's why we had involvement before in that Des Moines one. Cause we have part of our waters going that way.
Where were you involved with Des Moines?
Uh, over here in the west end, through the breaking Buffalo Creek and everything goes to Des Moines.
Cause that's why we were right there. Do the value of Shell Rock and the procedure.
No, it's not accurate though. Go on, unless there's a line going through there and that's dividing the line. But the color didn't change on each side of the line.
Okay.
That's the Winnebago.
Eastport, Des Moines, probably catch.
So, yeah, here, here's, and then this is the blue one, it goes that way. So half of our water goes to the, to Winnebago.
Iowa River really doesn't become a river for a few miles. You can't raft or canoe in it until you get way, you sail the east of here before you can do anything.
It's pretty big down by, by Hampton.
Right, it's huge, but it's nice by Hampton, but you come further north, it's
Cross is eighteen there, uh, down by Garner. That looks more like a direct dish.
Basically you'll bottom out if you try to boat in it. So I mean, it's, it's better to go further down. Okay, well. Means it's too late.
My recommendation is not to participate since we're not in it. I'm always interested in these things to have our say, but I don't think we need to have any say in this one.
Alright, we don't get a motion or anything on that, does anybody? Okay, number seven, consider for approval pay estimate number one for DD twenty-one, DD sixty-eight, one thirty-six, and DD sixty-eight, one thirty-six, lap two. Okay, number seven, consider for approval pay estimate number one for DD 21, DD 68, 136, and DD 68, 136, Lath 2, project.
You wanna make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay estimate number one for everything listed there. Seconded. Number seven, second from Stender to approve the pay estimate number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're open forum. Did you guys get a, uh, feedback in Robert's source? On bestis remediation on the LEC? How's that? I always said... No, I, I didn't think he did it because it just said money, but, uh... At last week's budget meeting, demolition of the old LEC was brought up as the county applied for a bestis renewable grant to help with the cost of their town. I understand up to 50,000 match grants are available. They have a one-to-one match, and I had to talk to them, see if it is true. I was just wondering. This seems to know the grant world, so...
Yeah, the, this is one of those brownfield grants probably. The guy that was managing that, Scott Flag, is now the DOT Recreation Affairs, you know, grant program.
Oh, the asbestos lawsuit, you think there'd be some money?
Did you determine, the only thing left in there is the stuff we can't really get at till things get removed or like boiler door and what else was it?
Something on the floor yet.
So I thought we had a lot of it taken out.
Your floors out.
Good morning, oh Kevin.
Hey, uh, he emailed yesterday about bestis renewable. Who was that through? Hold, hold on a second.
When I was talking to Joe Myrie, you still there?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was talking to Joe Myrie the other day, he brought it up. And I looked on the DNRC website, I see they've got a, uh, derelict building grant program. And one of them up there said it had to be in a community of less than 5,000. But I could, uh, or you could do the same, at Joe specifically, which one he was referring to, that was the one that I was aware of.
Okay, all right, yeah, we'll get ahold of him.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
You got me, Tom.
Yeah, I think there are some programs too to repurpose buildings rather than tear them down. To that, you're gonna use asbestos to repurpose them. Wow, Lord. I think there's different ways you can do it, but it's a set direction. But yeah, there is money available to, to take asbestos, and then there's also money available to repurpose.
Clearing the gills, we're open forum. Number 13, consider for approval public purpose policy for Winworth Vetco.
This is the one that we approved at the two county meeting the other day.
Please, Dean.
I'll make a motion to approve the public purpose policy from Vetco.
Motion from Derby and Stender to approve the public purpose policy for Winworth Vetco, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. I suppose they could go back to training, she gave us a report on what, how was it going down by the river.
Are you living in a van?
What's that?
Are you living in a van?
Yeah, I've heard that song.
I see they're, it seems like they, they're out there working on their equipment on Sundays, and it's like they pick certain days to...
I got a quick story for you related to vans. I worked for a laundry service when I was in, at Iowa State for a while, and I bought an old step van from them. And a bunch of kids from the church in Ames decided we'd go to the ledges. So we got 13 people in the back of my step van. I'd be arrested today, I think, if I did that.
We get something similar. The first year that I had my driver's license, I drove a 1966 International Traveler. And we went to Bluer. Being teenage boys, and a whole bunch of the Bluer guys got on their CBs, and there's three pickups, and then they got us locked off, they wanted to fight. I didn't realize we had 15 guys in there. It sat nine, and then we had five more sitting in the back. We, we had them outnumbered.
Oh, that's good, I like that.
They couldn't see in because they wouldn't cross all the windows back there.
Oh, sure, you put that many people in, no way. Oh, God.
And I was the smallest one in there.
You could stand back in the, for the fight.
Oh, you know.
He backed off.
We didn't know, being friends.
Oh, good. Couple of things, I guess, DD 11, the tile improvement job. We've got some more of the wetland determinations back, but there's still one Thompson Farm and Erasmussen Farm we don't have. There's one family that will have a $160,000 payment for wetland mitigation if it goes forward. So we've talked to Thompson's, they're the petitioners. They have enough land so that the others cannot really stop the job. So it's a matter of if Thompson's still wanna go through with it or not.
Is there, is there choices of what they can do through that area?
It depends on the local office. We've been able to do things with closed systems, tight joints, non-perforated. But that isn't allowed in all counties, so we'd have to present something specific to NRCS and FSA for them to look at.
There's, there's gotta be something that they don't want to increase, uh, drainage and loose pants. There's gotta be some way to just put a solid...
That'd be the next step, once we get those last determinations. Thompson's didn't realize they had some land in that section that we're missing, or they'd had it to us by now. They were real good about getting it in. Erasmussen's thought they'd submitted, we've been through the file again. I wanna, I'll end up asking Chris to get ahold of them, probably, uh, be sure we can get it, so. Should have you some more information shortly with that one. DD 21, the one we got the pay estimate here for today, Larson got in there and just cranked through that, including putting the pipe in. The only thing, two things haven't been done, there's two locations that we bid for repairing the bank. Significant washouts around pipe. Those they weren't able to do because they have to haul in some material and some seeding. And I wanna work with Larson and Lakeside and see if we can get Lakeside to do that for the price that Larson bid it at. What else? We're working on several reclasses for you. It's the time of the year, we're cranking on those. And Chris is on top of that and is, is wanting us to get those done in time that you can have a spring levy possibly on some of those. Those are coming along. Seems like there's been little things drag out as far as in the field and work we have to do. And you're all aware, some of those crops came out so late, we weren't able to do some of the preliminaries we wanted to. So we'll be on top of those too. Otherwise, it's a week to week thing here.
Well, I guess you could...
Can you explain that, uh, pay estimate a little bit? I don't know if you saw that or not. Oh, you did, oh, good. Very straightforward.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Well, it's, uh... 10 o'clock, Jacob and Westergaard, did you discuss a possible action, bid specs for DD 18, Lath 11 project?
Just a, oops, reminder where this is. That's just a quick overall where this thing is. Here's something specifically showing it in a blowdown case. What we're looking at is a tile improvement job that starts at DD 18, open ditch. And then what we're seeing here is Lath 11. And you probably remember when we presented the report for this, we looked at doing all of the laterals, and it ended up very expensive. This is also the one that had a major, major washout of the existing tile down by the ditch. Huge, um, that's been fixed. Yep, yep, so that was all fixed. We jumped a little bit to the west to go around the hill basically and not follow the old line quite so close. Uh, we think that was the best overall project. The, the good part of this is we, during our discussions, it was asked, what would it cost if we just went north of the, of the paved road? Cutting the project short. The numbers I put out at that time were very close to how we ended up now with the final design. So that's, wouldn't be any surprises for anybody. We're bidding a half inch and one inch coefficient, just because it takes little or no extra effort to do that. I'll be shocked if they don't go with the one inch coefficient. This one figures out for about 39% more money, you get 100% more drainage. So it's just, if they can swing it at all, it's the smart way to go.
Is there gonna be a water lane?
Doesn't look like it. This has been tiled pretty well. We haven't gotten any back anyway that have been a problem, so I anticipate this should be fine. We've talked to Chris about this, uh, the timing on this. And what we talked about was having you set the bid date for February 11th at 10 a.m. I think she looked at the agenda, but I don't know if you have anything on that far out or not, Carla.
I can look. Looks like you're good to go.
Okay, one concern I have with this is it's gonna be messy dealing with the railroad. We've got all those things taken care of, but the contractor again is, I mean, they're gonna have a flagman out there, they're gonna have an observer out there. We're gonna be required to keep checking elevations along the track where they're going every hour or two to be sure we're not raising the track when we go under it with the boring. And just, just more to deal with, that, that some contractors are, will be afraid of it. We've had great luck with Holland contracting here in town. I'm, I just, I made sure they were on our list of notification for this one since they're right here and have done all kinds of work through the years.
So for railroad too?
I'm sure they have with, as long as they've been around and as many projects as they've done. Yeah, I have to believe they dealt with the railroad. So.
And all the electrical lines are boring.
Yeah.
All over the place, it's, I would assume that once or twice they had to come up against it.
Well, yeah, yeah.
They had their own boring.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, that, that should help their price. Yeah, they've done several of our drainage projects in different counties and it's, it's always been good, so. They're hoping they get it. So, yeah, uh, February 11th, 10 o'clock is great. I've got a set of specs here with that date in it, but that can easily be revised if for some reason you wanted to change that.
Is there any discussion on the bid specs we have to have, no?
Not really, I can, I can leave, uh, the set with, with Chris. You're certainly welcome to see it, look through it, see what you think.
But it wasn't much different than what you originally?
No, no, it is basically the same thing, same sizing, costs with the short project came out very near the same, so close I couldn't believe it. My, what, I like to do this, get the plans and specs ready, get the final quantities, then without looking back, go through it and estimate the cost. Then go back and look at the preliminary engineering report and see how close I came, so. This one should be the same way.
So my question is, number eight, is there action we need to take on that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, it's just a setting of the date.
With, like, cities and state, they have to go through a hearing on the plans and specifications and, and... We haven't been doing that with drainage districts, we haven't been any issues even with drainage attorneys there. I guess if you wanted to be absolutely positive, you could just say you accept the plans and specifications as presented. Then there wouldn't be any question.
In essence, we do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With informing that.
Exactly.
That's all that's involved is the guys in the districts.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, it won't have any effect on the rest of the landowners.
So you want us to do that? You, do you accept?
I guess to be absolutely comfortable, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept Jane Goodson, Westergaard's bid specs for DD 18, Lath 11. I'll second it. Most of Stender, and a second from Derby. Accept Jane Goodson, Westergaard's bid specs for DD 18, Lath 11 project, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, set bid letting date for DD 18, Lath 11 project. Make a motion for February 11th, 20th, at 10 a.m. I'll second that. A motion from Stender, and a second from Derby to set the bid letting date for DD 18, Lath 11 project for February 11th, at 10 a.m. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The specs have the plans folded in the back, when there's, there's like only four plan sheets, and when you do it 11 by 17 sheets, um, it's just nice to have it all together so the contractor doesn't misplace anything, so. I'll leave this for Chris with the cost estimates. Sounds like Terry's fighting something too.
Yeah, we didn't want to clean that shell out there.
That's gone.
If I'd known, I probably should've stayed out of the auditorium stuff. Everybody else going to Carla, so. Thank you.
Anything comes up, let us know.
Tell us the location, and the other two are there. One has a clue, and you have the, that's like what you've got.
Lot of it going around.
That's going to take a change by the way, see, it probably seemed like that was.
That's good. She said orange. Oh, shoot.
Not appearance, just the color. I've got a niece that has four kids and a husband and they all got flu shots. And she ended up with the influenza A, which is not covered under the flu shot. So now they all have to go ahead and get other shots.
Oh.
Please get that team of those hot off stuff.
Carla, you mentioned that letter that they'd gotten about that coalition.
Yeah.
We're not even in that district.
Well, that's, when I read it, I thought.
Starts by first of the line and goes across to the dark house.
Yeah. And the thing that came to mind after I read the letter was, I'm sure you guys are, but you need to be careful what organizations you're in, because I could have seen those organizations say, well, Winnebago County is part of this and they're in favor of it.
They'll affiliate you with it just because you got your name on it.
Yes, yes. So not saying it's a bad organization necessarily, but.
And we don't know yet.
Exactly, exactly.
But since we have no skin in the game, it's no. And I think the appearances show something that had an agenda to it.
Yeah, yes.
I could be wrong.
Well put. I think you're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready before you hit?
Yep. Oh, sure.
I can find the renova box cleaners.
Thank you.
I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let the air clear before you get, Terry's got the crutch, she doesn't want to get it.
I don't think any of us want to get it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going around.
Yeah. Most people travel around so much, even while in school, especially this time of year, there's the gym factories, send the kids in there, mix it all.
Well. Yeah.
Have a good rest of your day.
Yeah, thank you. I tell people what we've done the last couple of days, they think we're crazy. I have a great nephew that plays basketball from Mason City. We drove to Mason City last night. My wife was white knuckled from hanging on to things. Because it wasn't very good.
Yeah, we drifted pretty good last night.
It was, so, but, yeah. This kid is born with a ball in his hands, I swear.
Really?
He's like a sophomore. He started as a freshman from Mason City last year.
Only kid.
Varsity. Only was taller, but he had 32 points last night.
Wow.
So he couldn't miss. So we had a blast, just an absolute blast.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Worth the trip.
Exactly, yeah.
Because you're here today, so you might have, it could have been that bad. Mason City puts out, I know it's not every six to eight years.
Yeah, yeah.
Or.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But, yeah, this kid is, he grew up and never without a ball in his hands dribbling it, throwing it. Just, yeah, amazing. We sat close to his sister last night who's in college and I said something about how good he was doing and she just moaned and groaned because they've been at each other, I guess. So, but he had one play that was kind of under the basket backcourt and made it. And I said, you had to like that one? Yeah.
Small man in your, just kind of this, I have some, I have blind sight and I thought, oh, I didn't want me to do it either. I just had to.
There you go. That was me too. Yeah, me too, so.
I did, I agree with you. I love basketball.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. Baseball, dude, if you do one of them.
There you go, yeah. Yeah, whatever works. Football obviously worked for you, so.
A little better than that.
Yeah, yeah, just a little. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, see me, I was, I started with all sports, but I just never got to one. Jack about crazy, man, should have done. Everyone said that. Well, maybe you can afford defense and rebounding.
So this is last year's, the one I'm getting it right now. These are last years, what are the values?
All right, you 15, discussion possible action regarding budgets. You just here for the budget stuff or?
Well, have you guys completed the budgets for all the departments yet? Are we still in discussion with those or?
We can be, yeah. It hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay, because I was just wondering if, like when I met with you, if my budget stays the way it is, or did you put the $4,000 in expenditures on mine, or did you put that back in IT?
I don't remember.
So we didn't put it anywhere at this point?
Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't do anything, did we?
No. Okay. So I mean, if you want it in the IT budget, the IT guy said he would do whatever the supervisors want. A lot of times though, when we have something that's just for a specific department, it goes in that specific department versus going into the IT budget. So, but like I said, stuff you did.
That's what we did with the assessor.
Yeah.
Just put it out, what was general IT, state in IT budget.
But this is the new program that you guys want us to go to, the new financial. And I just know from the other treasures that the contract didn't leave enough time for anybody to learn the program. Whether I use it or not, I just thought it needed to be in the contract. And so I just felt that that should be part of the program.
I don't remember. Did we, we didn't decide which button was going, but did we put it in the contract?
So we, last week, we signed an additional contract just for the treasurer's office for the additional hours. And that's what is in question today.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me where it goes. I guess I would prefer to put it in the IT. I guess the only thing I qualify that is that I've been trying to get it so we can track IT expenses, but we're not getting there anyways, so. Talking about the $4,000 extra that we approved last week for extra training if they need it for the treasurer's office. And whether it should be in the IT budget or be in the treasurer's budget.
Because I wonder, like for the Eagle program, the training there came out of IT. It wasn't directed to Chris, Chris's budget. So we just felt that it's the programming that the county is wanting to do. And hopefully I don't need to use it, but at least it's there in the contract for Tyler.
Well, I guess I look at it as money goes into one apartment or the other, I mean, it's all coming from the same source. It's not out of your original budget, it's in addition to your budget is what it is. So whether it's out of there or yours, I guess I don't have any problem.
Yeah, what about the taxpayer's pay? Let's just take it out of the ID.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then maybe in the future, when we discuss budgets, if it, you know, goes, if it's involving two departments that are both down here at the same time, we can discuss. So then we know how our budget's going to look when we get to the final part instead of having it changed. We didn't discuss it at all.
Yeah, it just, to me, it, like I said, taxpayer pay, my wish budget, it didn't seem to be a big issue in a sense.
Yeah.
Either way.
So the other thing.
And I can pretty much guarantee you that.
No, that's okay, you're still talking about this, so.
I can pretty much guarantee you that there may be one person in the county that looks at individual office budgets, but there'll be.
Yeah. Well, my expenditures are high anyway, I just don't need to increase it anymore. So the one more thing that, on that sheet with all the colors, Jennifer Ackerman, I called her yesterday and was confused about the transfers that she's doing. And she's doing a total $12,000 transfer out of communications, $5,000 to IT and the communication IT fund, and then $7,000 to the communication infrastructure fund. So that'll be, I have not put that in the budget yet, because I found out about it yesterday, so that'll be another amendment that I'll make. Along with this $4,000 into the IT budget.
So, say that again, this is not on the sheet?
It is on the sheet.
Okay.
It's not in the budget. Yes.
And what's extra on this one?
The $5,000 and the $7.
Five and seven, just those two?
Yep.
Okay. That's for her, I didn't have to set one before that.
So this is. This is the other sheet that I want you to look at. This is what.
Where's your staff?
What?
I'm sure you heard her over here.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done, go ahead.
Okay. So this sheet has the requirements with everything in the budget, what the total requirement amount. It also shows, the second column shows the fund balance, and then it shows what the balance of the fund would need to be to have 25% surplus like required. So that's just for your information on what you want to do with the levies and all that stuff. Terry, I have this sheet, the single one, that's last year's. And in the packet, on the fourth page, is this year's, showing the taxes, the valuations and the levies. So there you can compare. back page, the page two. There, this is the new requirement from the state that we have to publish this. This is our first publication. So it shows us what we've increased in general services and what we've increased in rural services. And rural services is, I probably should call Scott, because he needs to be part of this conversation.
What page are you on?
Page two, right near the first page.
On the back. Oh, page two, I think that's on the back.
No. So Scott moved his insurance from rural basic to rural supplemental. So that caused rural supplemental to go up by quite a bit.
So.
So the problem is, is that if you're going to use rural supplemental, you have to have rural basic at the max. So rural basic, if we have it at the max, creates a good fund balance, a fund balance where we should be with the fund, but then it creates a 23% increase in the rural services total. So the problem, like this year, it's, you know, it's fine, it's going to raise the taxes. But next year, there won't be, we won't be able, if we continue that levy for rural basic at what it, at the max, and then continue to have the other stuff at rural supplemental, you're going to create this huge fund balance in rural supplement, or rural basic, and then just continue, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I feel like we should put Scott's insurance back in rural basic, because it's not sustainable to have it in rural supplemental.
Why did he want to put it in?
Because he just thought every other department had all their insurance in a supplemental. So I mean, I see his, his point and why he did it, but.
And he'd like to build this.
But it changes the, I mean, really, we don't need rural basic at the max, but then you can't levy rural supplemental if you don't have general, or rural basic at the max. So then you're going to end up with these huge surpluses of funds and, we're just talking about you, Scott.
All right.
You must be watching the meeting last night.
I was, that was by chance. It really wasn't, but I was kind of looked at what you gave me, I guess.
How set are you on, on having your insurance, health insurance coming out of the supplemental?
I guess it isn't a material difference to me. I guess we neglected to, the amount was more than I expected in terms of percentage of rural.
More increase.
Yeah, so I guess I wasn't expecting it to lower the rural basic levy so far, but because I was looking at last year's rural supplemental levy, 0.27. And that levy produced 108,000.
So I, I mean, I see his, his point and why he did it, but-
And he'd like to build this.
But it changes the, I mean, really, we don't need Rural Basic at the max. But then you can't levy Rural Supplemental if you don't have General Basic, or Rural Basic at the max. So then you're gonna end up with these huge surpluses of funds, and we're just talking about you, Scott.
Alright.
You must be watching the meeting I-
I wa- that was by chance, it really wasn't, but I was, kind of looked at what you gave me, I guess.
How set are you on, on having your, your insurance, health insurance coming out of the supplemental?
I guess it, it isn't a material difference to me, I'd, I guess we neglected to... The amount was more than I expected in terms of percentage of rural-
More increase?
Yeah, so I guess I wasn't expecting it to lower the Rural Basic levy so far, but because I was looking at last year's Rural Supplemental levy, 0.27. And that levy produced 108,000. So I, well, I'm curious, how much was budgeted for expenditures at Rural Supplemental? Because I had 205,000 just in my department.
Last year?
Yeah, so you must have levied less-
Some fund balance last year?
Sure, you levied less than expenditures to lower the fund balance. What I'm guessing.
How much increase in Rural Basic? What dollar mark would it put it at the max?
Rural Basic?
Yeah.
Is at the max at 3... 3.95, 3.95.
Okay, what does that come out, oh, that's, so you've got it at the max on this sheet, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm. Because we have to have it at the max in order to use Rural Supplemental.
Is there any way to split up the insurance, so some of it comes out of supplemental and some of it?
I thought about that. I think the, you know, if, if some of it does, and you keep the max statutory Rural Basic levy,
Yeah.
you know, we can do that. Which means that, uh, your levy might need to be a little, Rural Basic levy might need to be a little higher, just in case, you know, some of it, some of the health insurance doesn't end up like I think, because ours is tied to each labor item. So if you go through the year, you're not sure exactly which ones are gonna pull how much. Hoping at the end it washes out, because you know what, your total salaries are gonna be, are pretty close. Is it important to try to move some of those expenditures to Rural Supplemental when you just add up Rural Basic and Supplemental at the end anyway? You know, to get the Rural Levy, it's kind of how you wanna show it on paper? Or, or else like we can just move it all back, keep the Rural Supplemental levy very low, and increase the Rural Basic levy a little bit?
I don't care.
Right, I mean, the, the levy to the people is the same whether it's from supplemental or Rural Basic levies.
And, and it's not gonna make a difference this year, it's next year that it's gonna make a difference. Because we'll have, have to keep that rule.
Probably don't remember. I think, I think, I don't know, but I think most people look at the dollars.
Right, the to- the total.
What they write their check up, they don't look, they don't really look at the levies, they don't look to- I might be wrong, but I-
So, so next year, if we end up with a healthy balance in the basic, can we go back to the basic, paying more of it?
We, we probably could. Yeah, it's like, why, yeah, I guess my question is, why set it up to have to, you know, juggle health insurance back and forth between two levies when ultimately, the net levy is the important part? You know, the, the addition of Basic and Supplemental. Frankly, I'm not quite sure why, you know-
As Carl said, you gotta keep it at 3.95 to get it.
Yeah.
I'm trying to keep taxes down for the farmer.
Well, yeah.
It doesn't matter, Terry, it, it's, that, that's-
You weren't at the Farm Bureau meeting the other day to tell them that?
Well, you know, they have a member there that, uh, spent a lot of money for the county, so, I think he's still a member, but-
So, I guess my point is, we have the same proposal regardless of which levy it comes out of.
This year.
It doesn't matter what-
I guess, you know, what you guys set the levy at, I guess you guys-
But you wouldn't need to have that levy so high if you had- But the dollars, you wouldn't have to have the dollars so high if you-
I think it makes the most sense to put our health insurance back into Rural Basic levy. Drop your Rural Supplemental levy to whatever you need, and make the Rural Basic levy whatever you need. Otherwise, you're just levying extra because you're required to-
Have the one at the max.
Have your Rural Basic at the max in order to use Rural Supplemental.
So the difference, nu- the difference in numbers is, last year's all Rural Services was, uh, 1.86 million. And next year's is 2.3.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big di- big difference between your, because you're levying more than our expenditure proposal was.
Yeah.
Just to, to improve your fund balance. Yeah, yeah, because you're, you're levying more than proposed expenditures just to, you know, help our fund balances, which is important too. But it isn't completely necessary.
It's dependable.
Yeah, it is.
In my opinion.
It is, it's just a, you know, you're trying to maybe get your fund balance where you want it in one year, rather than trying to, you know, incrementally.
It should be incremental.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my, my thought is incrementally try to improve your fund balance. In the meantime, try to get savings through the year so that your carryover balances have more than you expected. And, you know, then the fund balance will grow. It, it takes, you know, effort from a couple different angles.
You haven't had a chance to talk to Joe Myrie about the TIP dollars that he-
I guess I wasn't, didn't-
So, in Worth County, they're going through the same thing we are. They're trying to figure out how to utilize the TIP dollars to pay for some projects and whatever. They're gonna have to go just amend their urban renewal to have the whole county involved, instead of just those areas. And that opens it up to where you're more flexible on what you're using that money for. If you choose to do that. And I'm just wondering if we can do some of this through, you know, things like that to lessen the urban, you know, build our fund balance some this year through that. And, uh, and then we can lower the levy next year some more. The county for those.
It kinda defeats the, the original purpose of the TIP. I know where you're coming from, but, you know, when all is said and done, it doesn't matter where the money comes from, it's how much we spend. And the people that I have talked to who were staunch to get this courthouse back to where it should be, that took, the county took a huge hit on that. So, I mean, um, I, I'll sit and defend the way we have spent money, you know, up until this point, and I maybe will, will not, actually agree with you for this year, I mean, 21. It, uh, if they want these services, you gotta pay for them. It comes down to that, in my opinion. There are those that have said that they would be happy with our services.
Try to get a bunch to agree on it, right, yeah, that's the tricky part.
And those same people that say that when it's affecting their service, then, you know, it's, well, yeah, it's gotta be separate, it's separate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we haven't had any discussions about what services we wanna try to cut or relieve or whatever. You know, that's the tricky part, I put in what I think it's gonna cost to do what we're currently doing.
We could sit and try to manipulate the income side of this, but that, to me, that's a futile game. I think we're charged with run the county, do it as efficient as you can, and levy the taxes, you know. And that's the way I've approached it.
Using the TIP dollars, trying to spread the impact out a little bit. And, you know, you can afford more, uh, more impact when, uh, when the times are a little better as far as, you know, the profits for agriculture.
Yeah.
And right now, it means it's a little tough, it just, uh, takes a little of the initial blow, I know what you're saying, the money's the money. And if, and if we use the TIP dollars, there's gonna be interest on it and all that stuff that, uh, that we'll lose instead of-
But that's the consequence of us spending the money in good times. You know, and, and when I say us, I mean the whole county, not just us three, you know.
I don't think I wanna have to, you know, have to explain these numbers, or these numbers at a public forum over in Thompson again, to those same people that were there last year, and try to rationalize why we did what we did. That's where I think it should be more of an incremental thing.
I mean, so you, I'm not, I'm not opposed to using the TIP. I, maybe I came off as that, no, I'm not opposed to that. But I don't think that's what the people originally, when we did the TIP, originally did the TIP, this wasn't in the picture, you know. So we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta be balanced, let's put it that way.
Um, Carla, do you know how much is, the difference in expense and revenue is for the Rural Basic proposal that you have in here? Like you said, la- last year's was 1.8 million or something, this year's 2.3. A portion of that is excess revenue for fund balance building, so-
That's why I'm going, do we have to go all that?
All that, and based, although the, you know, Rural Basic sheet has shown here, 25% of the annual revenue or expenditures, whatever, is 587,000. And based on this, ending fund balance is 564,000, so-
After what the numbers that were put in?
Yeah, so it's a healthy ending fund balance with the proposal. We maybe wanna just ratchet back a little bit and keep working on it from year to year.
I'd like to, you know, like I said, if you can utilize some of the TIP funds to, to help build up that balance because of-
Yeah.
Paying back the TIP.
I mean, that's an option, hard to put a finger on what that number looks like, I guess, and-
We have to commit to updating our urban renewal, if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, okay.
I think the mistake, at least in my rationale, when I went through all this, so the mistake I made, been thinking about it all, was we should've got a solid estimate as to what the cost of this, the cord also is gonna be. And then put that in, because I think, you know, we're nickel, we gradually spend it every year now for many years. And we do it now. So I think we should've said, this is gonna cost four and a half million dollars, whatever it's gonna cost, I don't care. I'll be, I'll be the guy that says, it's gonna cost two and a half million dollars, everything else, you know, five years, six years, you wanna do it. That's the mistake I see, I-
Does that kinda water under the-
No, I know, I know.
You getting my number?
Well, I've got 21, you want 20 also?
No, 21.
Okay, so Rural Basic revenue, 1,721, uh, 185. And then Rural Supplemental revenue is 6 million, yeah, I got something wrong there. 672.
So I'm wondering for the proposed budget, what the expenses are and revenues are, and what the difference is. Do some whiteboard math here.
Did you get that?
What?
Revenue, Rural Supplemental.
For what year?
21, 687, 332. Expenditures for 21 for Rural Basic, uh, 506,105. And then Rural Supplemental expenditures.
I'm not getting it. Hmm, it's not right. 506,000 expenditures, uh. Something, something missing.
What I've got? Oh, I've got, then there's your transfers. So the transfers equal-
There's not a to- like a total in and out number on there, and all those are pain.
If the Department of Revenue or the Department of Management can get their forms approved properly, there would be, but there's not. So you can add 506,00105, and 1,281,412. That'll give you the total.
Those two numbers, the transfer-
That's the expenditure.
The transfer is the 1,281. And the other expenditures is the 506.
That's the proposed expenditures from Rural Basic?
Rural Basic, yep. And the Rural Supplemental expenditures are 617,648 dollars.
So even the way it is, our Rural Basic account is budgeted upside down by 150,000. So it looks, I guess I haven't seen their other departments' numbers, but I was, I had kind of relieved about 300,000 or a little more from expenditures, and it's only down 150,000.
So with what we have in there right now, it leaves the Rural Basic ending balance at 564,431 dollars. The 25% is 587,987, so it doesn't even get us to the 25%.
The way it was presented?
The way it's presented, right. And that information's on the sheet.
So I was expecting you to tell me that, you know, with the 3.95 levy, we were levying 1.6 million. But we only had expenditures programmed for 1.345, whatever it would be, but we still have. You're saying expenditures programmed for more than even that levy?
Say that again?
Your total proposed Rural Basic expenditures, almost 1.8 million. Based on the Rural Basic levy at the 3.95, you levy 1.63 million. So how could we lower the Rural Basic levy when it's already expenditures higher than the-
The problem is that we didn't have 25% last year in the fund balance, so that ex, it's-
How much did we have?
I'm not sure right now. So last year's ending fund balance was 257,000.
That's basic.
Yep. Last year, ending fund balance for general basic was 287,334.
Part of the reason your levy was so low last year is because you're using sub, rural supplemental fund balance, I suppose.
Rural supplemental fund balance was 62,280 last year.
62,000?
62,280 dollars.
So how did you have that poor fund balance levy very little and support all expenditures? You know, those two numbers added together don't get what I budgeted for my department. Follow what I'm saying?
I do.
That 108 there almost seems like a error. The rural supplemental levy last year. Seems like every time I look at that rural supplemental fund balance in the ledger too, it looks okay.
Well, listen, I've got rural beginning balance of July 1st was, in the most woman, was 237,489 dollars. So our beginning balance is fine.
Fine. Do you know the rural supplemental levies from years prior? Just looks a little funny.
So the beginning fund balance for rural supplemental for 2020 would have been 201,787 dollars. With the 108,000 that left in ending balance. That's weird.
Yeah, because if you had 201 to start, added 108, you'd have 309, but you budgeted expenditures more than that.
But I have a beginning fund balance for this year for 207,000.
Right, so there's a disconnect there.
I don't know if I'm not looking at something right, or if I need to just go to my office for a second or minute, but.
Or if everybody's got over budgeted.
What would you figure for expenditures and rural supplemental last year for this current year?
This current year? A quick one, says I had FIC and IFRS coming out of rural supplemental, and I added 350,000 in health insurance. But FIC and IFRS added up to 205,000 last year. And I can't remember this year's exact number.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what she's talking about.
Yeah.
201,000 to start with, and then you added 107.
So I've beginning balance, 201,787. Revenue of 108,75 equals 310,462. I have expenditures. Equals 108,675. So that's budgeted, then you take the actuals.
I mean, out of rural supplemental, how would the actuals vary from the budgeted?
It does though. So you take the actuals and then you come up with your beginning balance.
Yeah, I suppose. Probably only had his you know, benefits in there.
But you're not the only department that has stuff in there. So if someone else budgeted more than what they expended, then you have a surplus.
Do you got shares?
Sheriff's Department, you have Conservation. Off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, but if they're an employee, if they, I don't know, it just depends on.
Well, I bet mine are pretty spot on, so that might be something to check for whoever else has got budgeted amounts in there to see if they're over budgeting or something. Maybe can run our actuals versus budgeted report and that from last year, the year before or something, see what, see if we can find anything there. Otherwise, I mean, if last year you levied 108,000, but you know, the actual annual expenditures from there are more like 250, you know, of course it's going to look a lot more, even if you just match the need, much less try to build any fund balance. But you know, that's a fund where you probably don't need a big ending fund balance because it doesn't have a large amount of things going in and out. And it isn't unpredictable like some of the other things. So if you know, our total for rural basic and supplemental is going up 25%, kind of a small chunk of that is just to match revenues and expenditures back up. I wonder if it wouldn't be easier to kind of move our health insurance back to secondary road fund, juggle some numbers here, and then kind of reprint this and look at it again.
I think you need to decide whether you want it there or here. It's, because it's not an easy thing just to move them back and forth.
So when we're looking at this rural services, both basic and supplemental have other departments in it. So it's not all of this because of him.
Right.
Just FIC, IFRS, health insurance, or other employees that the rest of it's made up of.
Did you get anything from, what do we have revenues for county conservation?
I put it in. I can print you a new.
Yeah, because he presented us with his sheet that didn't cover all the revenues.
I'll print you a flex sheets too.
Because he was adding staff. Would it show up in his revenue sheets if he was drawing from supplemental or basic?
No, it would show up in expenditures.
It's in expenditures.
Is there a way to show rural supplemental expenditures all grouped into levy rather than grouped into departments?
From the budgeting. That would be the whole.
On this? They wouldn't show line item, like, wouldn't show all the items budgeted from rural supplemental, right? All right, how do we?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at each page, it just has all the.
Okay, I got you.
1 and people, it shows everything all, everything that's budgeted.
I got you.
Do you all want any flex sheets for expenditure?
Before we do this, should, have we discussed the request for the museum? Are we gonna put that in there? What series of stuff in there? And we were giving them $3,000 a year before, and we cut that. Do we want to just do a special project donation out of the budget? I don't think it's going to be committed, because I don't think this is a good idea. I was thinking, remember I was coming up with this possibly $5,000 donation for that project? It'll still be 1,000 less than a two-year donation that we normally would give them. It'll be interesting to see what the other companies do. Especially the one that's actually. But Tom, that's in, I don't know who comes. And definitely will impact schools around here. I can see it impacting, if it draws tourism, it doesn't impact this town more than those towns down there. It'll be interesting to see. Personally, I would. I think it's a great idea, especially if I have so much money to donate to it that I have. The other thing has to say, when you have a hard time, sometimes donating other people's money. It's an easy can be do, but it'd it would be nice if everybody just gave their own donation. We didn't have to go through us. So when I'm looking at these sheets, the page, the one that has general administration. Oh, shoot, I was in the wrong column. Never mind. I thought I was in rural services, but it was in HHS. Now I understand it. So we've got our solid waste disposal in there. Rural services. This page that has council of conservation, the education service, the road broke down so you can see where the the money's coming from. Top of the page, so the top it says general funds, special revenue funds in total, which is looking at environmental quality. Yes, solid waste disposal, four thousand eight hundred. So that'd be our, our. Oh, that's coming in. Okay. Two rural services, basic. So on the next page then, where it says, uh, the road leveling and program, one hundred and twenty-five thousand under roads, is that coming from the state? Or where's the one hundred and twenty-five coming from?
This is direct rural basic expenditures for our department. So it's money that isn't transferred to secondary road fund, but we spend it directly out of there.
Well, now I'm confused. 'Cause up above, you said it was, is this an expenditure up there?
On the, both of those pages, the one that says general fund, special revenue funds in totals, that both of those sheets are revenue sheets.
What's under revenue?
I know, I take that back. Just the top one is revenue.
The one I'm talking about down below, the road maintenance expenditure?
I don't see that.
I'm looking up here. This is what I was talking.
Oh, so then these are expenditures.
They are expenditures?
Yes. Yep. The only one that's revenue is the one way at the front.
My uncle died. Your uncle died? Out of Ohio? Yes, my mom's brother. One of many. There was a bunch of them, was there? It'd be Sharon Holland's brother too. Got pneumonia. So I'm looking at, in expenditures under educational services, the fairgrounds. Well, I guess it's under fair and four H W.
Yeah.
Comes from others. So I wonder if that's coming from, she identifies it as. When, when we give money to the fair board? It's under other. So do you identify that as coming from the tipping fees or?
No, it's just it. So it's other, and then it's a transfer also.
Okay.
On the last page, it, um, on the page at the zero. So I don't like the way their budget system is switching on this page, and there's a transfer right there, three hundred and fifty thousand.
So it still comes to county services?
Yes.
There's a transfer to rural supplemental, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep.
What is, how's that work? The sales tax we collect gets transferred to rural basic?
Some of it.
As a revenue? I didn't know that. Is it kind of earmarked or anything, or it just kind of goes to fund balance and then you budget?
It is required, let's see, no. It's basically for secondary roads and, I mean, it's already, you're using it already, so don't get any ideas.
Well, I was just wondering how that worked, 'cause we, same as WM to rural basics, that tipping fees, WM, what is?
It's management. Are you happy with ending balances the way they are? Do you wanna increase, decrease?
I guess I'd like to get back up where we should be, but it's hard to do it all at once. Plus bringing that to us to each county, so I don't think we have to worry about it.
Just the way that it is now, you know, with our health insurance and rural supplemental, if, if we don't wanna juggle back and forth, then you're gonna levy, the max levy, three point nine five, plus whatever supplemental amounts to from here going forward. Unless you wanna move health insurance back and be able to kind of play with your rural basic levy, you know, based on fund balances or whatever. So I, you know, I don't think you're gonna, whatever that combined levy, five point, whatever, I don't think you're gonna lower that from here for forever unless we wanna put that health insurance back. Otherwise, you're kind of, you know, locked into that because you won't be able to play with benefits hardly, and the minimum levy will be the minimum, or, well, minimum and maximum. Right, minimum, maximum, it'll be right there. So pretty much, if we don't move health insurance back, you're pretty much saying we'll stick with that five point, whatever levy from here indefinitely. And that might be where we really need to be to sustain, but I, that's up to you guys, so otherwise we'll move health insurance back and you guys can play with the levy to get whatever fund balance you're looking for.
So if you move it back, we're gonna be over the three ninety-five, but?
Right.
Yes.
And we were, last year, four-four. What's the everything balance for county budgets? You all say percentage?
I mean, she's got twenty-five percent. That seems like a pretty good target, I guess, so what I was after for secondary road.
County balances percentage wise in Iowa for counties?
I'd like to have more from my fund, 'cause it's highly volatile, but, you know, for some funds, pretty predictable. At least if we, you know, juggle the numbers to move our health insurance back, at least if we have high, you know, numbers still get side by side, that would be a little easier. Drop rural supplemental and increase rural basic, but I don't think either one's gonna be enough to be just satisfied to say looks good. I mean, I think they'll both be higher, but.
Your change, what, was about five hundred and some thousand dollars?
No, that was our kind of total request from rural supplemental. That includes like Iper's health insurance. The only thing we moved is health insurance.
I said you were at two forty-seven before, weren't you?
Something like that. I think our, I think we'd asked for two hundred and five thousand last year. So health insurance is the only thing we moved over.
Right.
So if we moved it back, we'd still have two hundred and some thousand in like Iper's expenditures, still out of rural supplemental, which, you know, that.
I'm just trying to look at the numbers and see what number would switch to basic. What are you changing? Total that you need to push this health insurance back up.
This is kind of what I penciled out that I would change, and there's many account numbers that need to be changed to result in that because of all the labor items, but.
Did you have all health insurance in that supplemental proposal?
Right.
Okay, so three fifty is the number.
Yep, yep, okay. Yeah, yeah, three fifty, oh, that's like three, you know, three fifty rounded, three forty-eight or something like that.
So that would be.
And we did kind of a three-way switch too, because we took expenditures from secondary roads paid from rural supplemental, and we took expenditures from, directly from rural basic, put them in secondary road fund. So there's a bit of a circle of moving parts there. Basically, what you do is decrease our rural supplemental expenditures, increase our rural basic.
That's what I'm talking about. It'd be about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more and that, and change from last year to this year, it, to start with on the basic was one hundred and twenty-five thousand or so. Hundred and thirty thousand, it went down. So you're looking at, uh, two twenty. It'd go, from last year, it'd go up two hundred and twenty thousand. Just under two million. So under current valuations. And you have some people, people buy it, you can't just, the, I remember last year I was trying to take the one, say the one point six two seven million and divide it by the three point nine five to get my valuations. Isn't there something else that goes into that? Seems like there was another step. It wasn't as easy as that. So if you take the one points, the one, one million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and two, divide it by three point nine five levy rate, that tells you what your other number is. You take that other number and multiply it, or you can take your target number, one point nine. Or you can take your target number, one point nine seven million. And divide it by your target number that gives you your levy rate. Is that as simple as that?
I think so, no?
Seems like last year there was some, maybe on other parts of it, I don't know.
The valuations are known right now.
Yeah, the valuations are in that, that, on the fourth page, they're on the column, it says valuation.
I mean, the valuations are, rural valuation's up over three percent, so you'd think we'd be able to. Keep levy rates the same. Expenditures within small adjustments.
Those valuations are you looking at?
So with gas and electric?
Okay. So apparently, they don't, they haven't figured in ITC lines yet, though. Is it hardly even went up? Everything else went up more than gas and electric stuff. I don't know, there's a, an abatement process for the utilities through the state, it was, but.
They weren't on my sheets for this year when I did utilities.
They got like a year. Or something?
I'm not sure of the laws on utilities.
Yeah, the assessor has nothing to do with it, so she doesn't know.
It comes to me from the state and I put the numbers. And you're on the line.
So we levy on utilities through the state. The state collects the money then?
No, that, so the, the money comes here, but the state gives us the rate and the miles that we use to figure the tax, the taxes, utility amount on, for the utilities.
So some money's got to be coming online that'll help our, that's, that's expensive, lines up there.
Yeah, we're always, seems like we're always generating taxes based on valuations from.
Well, yeah, we're.
Five years ago.
Yeah, these are.
Because it's what, for, when turbine become online, it takes three tax years to get there. And then it's incrementally twenty, forty, sixty, seventy.
Yeah.
So what do you want me to do?
I'm, I'm just figuring it. I guess. And his suggestion was just to put it back in the rural basic to simplify things a little bit. So you divide that by the four twelve. Oh, fifty-one. Seventy-one's almost four point eight. Yeah. Pretty close. Plus another couple of hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars more to four point eight zero. Would come out to one million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five in rural basic. And then you'd go back to. Two hundred and three fifty-five. Two hundred and twenty-two.
Sheets, Carla, tricky because they don't show you. Total expenditures from rural basic. Total number somewhere or?
That one is printed. That's, it's Department of Management, they need to work on that. Because this needs to be on the, on the sheet this way, not this way. And they don't give us a choice.
But either way, that number isn't written anywhere.
It's under, it's down here, you just can't see it.
Doesn't it just skip to the next page? Uh, no.
It's in the program, it's just not on the paper. Makes it difficult.
So it looks like seventy-one, nine on supplemental. Darn close. Four nineteen. I just want to make sure I have my justification to the people.
Hey, to me, that's going to be easy this year.
So.
So you want me to put the insurance back in rural basic?
I don't know, what do you guys think? Don't you think it'd be better next year if we did that?
Sounds like that. I guess. I don't really, I don't care. I think it's something I don't care. It doesn't matter.
I think with that, you know, with that max, having to max out basic every year to put that much into supplemental, I think we have to manage that. So. I guess that's my opinion, I'd rather do it this year the right way, so we don't have to fight it next year. More flexibility next year, I would.
Got to throw that in there.
So the, the total of rural services is going to stay about the same if you just come up with a target number for your.
Roll the room?
Yeah. When I came up with four point eight and point seventy-one-nine, it's just slightly higher. I mean, ever so slightly higher, like by two hundred and fifty dollars total.
So the IT, put four thousand dollars more on the IT. Put gas insurance in the rural basic. Back to communications, is there anything else that you have concerns about?
Well, do we want to address the museum?
And your educational. From the sounds, but they're moving down slow, that's probably a project that's going to push into the twenty-two budget year.
We can, we can double our donation this year if we commit to it. Because of the match. That's a pretty good value there.
So that, you know, the donation will probably get in the overall measures if you're not going to fuck into the sentence, but. I just feel inside, I, I think it's a good idea. Hey, you know, in the overall picture, it could probably be a good one, but. I guess we just have to decide at the moment. I mean, that's one that would be easy to defend. If someone catches that one, that's just, hey, that's not the idea, I mean, that's, I'm all for it.
Is there, and if we do that, educational services comes out of what? Flexible there will be?
It's one fifty-four. It'll be equipment. So it'd be forty or sixty-four. Ten.
Historic preservation.
Yep.
And where's the source of that come from?
General basic. So it's just general basic.
Because we lowered general basic slightly, so. I think if we can formulate that into general basic, I'd rather do that.
And that's something that everybody.
Right.
Is going to benefit from the general.
How much?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the question. Will you, will you just go?
Three.
Three a year? You guys can, you're not, you're not. She wanted to go with double what we would have given, so it was six.
Oh, I thought five was probably enough, but. And to me, we gave five thousand to the Fine Arts Center to make them match for the cap. I look at this as being the same thing. We're giving five thousand to make it look better on that other grounds.
Yeah.
For the great places. I think it'd look better if we.
And I'm just talking, you know, because they got, they got private, they just got to double what we do.
Yeah.
And anything else?
I think that was it.
Okay.
I wouldn't surprise me if the sheriff's budget was going to be a little extra.
Well, that's going to maybe have to change because revenue's coming in this year.
Not anymore.
Without hopefully any more expenditures than be budgeted for, so he'll be a little better off there.
Are you talking about not a deputy?
And I, I don't think we put that in.
He didn't.
But we don't have.
Not the actual, he's got.
He's got the same.
The other one, it's the same.
That's cool.
And the other one, well, we won't know for a year anyway whether we're going to be able to.
But we could, we can justify an amendment if we have dollars coming in to cover. You know, cover, which should we have extra dollars there to? Because their, their funds are not going to be enough to cover it.
It's thirty, what, thirty thousand?
Thirty-eight or something like that.
And our cost is going to be what, sixty-something? Seventy-something? Most benefits?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
It's going to be probably less than half of what the actual cost is going to be.
Well, and then if they have in their budget, if we're real clear on it, I think in their budget, they had eighty thousand in their police budget. And so they could increase the contract to have more hours of patrol in town.
Oh.
And that is an option out there. That's not an option for this year because we, until they sign the four-year contract, we can't know whether we're going to hire that other deputy. And when they do, if they want to double their hours of patrol time, then, then they'll have to add more of what they had in their budget for policemen into the ship, into, into the contract.
So we were figuring on this contract that, what, forty dollars per resident?
Yeah, with the partnership. For some reason, I want to say thirty something. I thought it was going to be, uh, thirty years. But then they said that it was cheaper in Hancock, but then, you know, Kelsey thought to. What's the sheriff's name?
They were forty dollars way back.
No, they were, they're over thirty fifty now.
Yeah, they were, they were forty dollars when we started raising.
Yeah, and one of the councilmen, I must say, got some bad information, and he thought that Hancock was going to be much cheaper than what we were.
Worth companies, not. I've worked, but I, I, maybe, maybe he just, I don't know if they've changed it since, but they. I think I did talk to one of the supervisors in there, look at it, you should probably change.
What's the Hancock insurance?
Yeah. We got to start that process, all the city boards.
Well, I misread the contract to go through. Twenty-one.
Through fiscal year twenty-one? All right, so after they're done with this budgeting, then we.
Probably need to start looking at it in about six months.
Yeah. Yes, we'll have to the sheriff to figure that out.
Yeah. And that's why it's working for four years, even if it's due to the sheriff. Actually, my office does most of it.
Yeah. Obviously, the sheriff knows what it is, but they're not.
Okay, I'll make changes and let you, uh, new budget.
Unless we wouldn't put, say, how much is it? How much was the contract to go for this year?
Three, three is what you said.
We put, you know, half of that month in his budget, the revenue and expense. At least we're partway there because we know it's coming in this fiscal, this fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can put that.
On those items.
We stand adjourned? She already told us to adjourn. No, that's still fresh.
Carla, how do you want me to? Clean up the.
You want to turn in your sheets, I'll just stay here.
I can, but I mean, there's thirty-five labor numbers, so there's that many health insurance numbers to change back. I guess I gave you which way to go, I was just putting them back.